Okay folks, we'll call the meeting to work. Please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and ever so far.
Thank you for that enthusiastic version of the pledge of allegiance. We'll open up for a public comment. Anyone have any general public comments that you would like to share at this time? I have one, and that would be to welcome Mr. Tom Benson, our new writer, our beat writer for The Messenger.
I am beat.
Thank you for being here, Tom.
My pleasure.
Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is the proclamation regarding disposable straws. We had a presentation by Ms. McKenzie Smith, a sixth grader at the city school, promoting an initiative to limit or rule out the use of straws within St. Albans City. The presentation was very well received by the council, and we appreciate that. The outcome for the council that we have at this time is we have a resolution on disposable straws. So Ms. Smith, if you'd like to step up here. A resolution on disposable straws, whereas the United States uses 500 million straws per day, and whereas 90 percent of marine debris is plastic, which slowly degrades into smaller and smaller pieces that get ingested by marine and land animals, and whereas students at the St. Albans City School help bring this issue to public attention through a petition and community organizing campaign, and whereas the St. Albans City Council strives to be proactive and responsive to community concerns, and whereas each and every citizen may reach their own sipping point in the course of their daily lives. Now therefore, I, Tim Smith, St. Albans City Mayor, do hereby encourage St. Albans City residents to explore the many alternatives to plastic straws and drink the local beverages that can be enjoyed without a straw, such as milk processed by the St. Albans Co-op, maple water from Drink Maple, and 14 Star Beer. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of St. Albans on the 11th day of January 2019. Ms. McKenzie, thank you very much. Here's your resolution.
What's not on there, which I'll write on when we get home, is a crowd to be your father.
Do you need a motion to adopt the resolution?
Sure. I would move that we adopt the resolution, and maybe amend that to be the 11th day of March 2019, and that we send a copy of said to the chairs of the House and Senate committees on natural resources as they consider their single-use plastic spills.
Oh, suck it, gentlemen. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. McKenzie, thank you for coming in again. We appreciate your efforts. You did a wonderful job. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, pilot transitional employment. Dom, I think we're gonna move this to nine o'clock. Kathy Lavoie, if you want to come forth. So this is pilot transitional employment program. It's a briefing by Kathy Lavoie. What's your official title, Kathy?
I'm the one-stop manager for the Restorative Justice Center.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Timothy, and for receiving me earlier than nine.
I wouldn't want to get away with it.
I never do. So I'm here as the one-stop program manager for the Restorative Justice Center. I've been in that position now for all of two months. I come from, as the executive director for the Workforce Investment Board for Franklin and Grand Isle County. Certainly, one of the most crucial issues that we have is just workforce development in general, and it's throughout the state. Much of it has to do with simply not having enough people, but certainly there's the other aspect of not having enough individuals that are trained in any specific industry, and that those individuals may have numerous barriers. And those barriers are everything from transportation to housing, to substance abuse, and certainly to those individuals who have some sort of a criminal record. And those second chance individuals, as they're called, certainly have a much more acute time trying to find unemployment. So that's been my mission for several years, is to work with that demographic, and I'm fortunate to be doing so. Well, before I came to this position, there had numerous times over the years been conversations regarding how, as a region, we could possibly work with the individuals that are on probation and parole. And at any one time in Franklin and Grand Isle County, there's between 600 and 800 individuals on probation and parole that we certainly could use in our workforce. So, many times over the years, the discussion has been had as to how we can put those individuals to work in our communities and still support them for their overall goals and our overall benefit. A few months back, actually in October, the Restorative Justice Center approached me regarding such a conversation, and at that time I was the whip director, and gathered together a bunch of individuals to have the conversation around a tiered employment transitional program for these individuals. Since then, we've brought several parties together in on the conversation. We have gotten an agreement and commitment from the Department of Corrections to work with us on an employment transition program, as well as the Vermont Department of Labor. The Department of Labor specifically has been looking for a pilot program such as this for quite some time, and unfortunately, I think, have developed one. The one-stop services for a Restorative Justice Center were the only one in the state that does have a one-stop service for the Restorative Justice Center. And what it is, is the wraparound services, pretty much, that an individual needs in order to be successful in career pathways and becoming an employee. And those wraparound services, as you can imagine, are everything from being able to find housing, to food necessity, to working with CBOE, to working with Vermont Department of Labor, any service that may be required by a whole host of our community members, not just those with probation and parole. What has been developed is a two-tier program that is focused on construction. And the two-tier program, the first tier is meant to hopefully have between 10 and 16 individuals, although we could probably go up as far as 20. And that Tier One is meant to be those transitional employment skills that we often talk about. So they would be everything from conflict resolution, to basic resume writing, interviewing skills, and working in a team, and all of those things that are delivered across the state in various ways. But for Tier One, those individuals would go through that process. Specific to construction within Tier One, there is a possibility that we may deliver within the Tier One, a program that is called NCCER, and now I'm going to remember what it means, but it is a national construction curriculum. And it's considered a credible credential, which is what we need to be delivering to all of our individuals if we're training them. But certainly, it is something that we don't want to put these individuals at a disadvantage of competition, so we need to be delivering to them. So within Tier One, there's a consideration for also delivering hand tools and power tools within that. The Tier Two is meant to bring in the more higher level of construction within NCCER curriculum, and then to deliver an on-the-job training program. That is where the partnership with the City of St. Albans comes in. Certainly, Dominic can speak to this more than I can, but there's certainly enough properties within the City of St. Albans that they own, in which there is a need for construction to be done. And the best way to, of course, deliver the NCCER curriculum is through the hands-on training as well. Incidentally, this curriculum is now being delivered in all of the building trades programs across the state of Vermont for the young adults that are coming out, graduating from high school and going into the field. So the Tier Two, which we hope to have between 600 and 800 individuals that actually flow from Tier One, and you know, that whole vetting process of who moves from Tier One into Tier Two, we haven't yet defined. It may become very obvious. They may self-select that they don't want to go into Tier Two. We may decide that they're not going into Tier Two, or all of the above. But within that, we hope to have between 600 and 800 individuals that will be delivered the rest of the NCCER curriculum, and have the on-the-job training for, actually, which is quite unique, the restorative practice of these individuals going out into their communities that they in some way have harmed to do restoration. Overall, we have many partners, the Department of Corrections, Vermont Department of Labor, Agency of Human Services, as well as, of course, the City of St. Albans, Northwest Tech Center, Community College of Vermont, Vermont Adult Learning, Vermont Works for Women, and the Community High School of Vermont. NCCER is being delivered in some of the correctional facilities around the state, and I do have individuals I'm working with right now that have gotten three of the nine tiers of that NCCER curriculum, so some of them would just be sharing up and completing the curriculum. It is expected that within the first tier of the curriculum, it would be someplace between four to six weeks. Again, that's going to take some refining. Some of it may be exactly what we deliver within that first tier, and if we do deliver hand tools and small power tools, then it may end up being six weeks. The second part of it, Tier Two, is expected to be up to three months of delivery, and will include both the hands-on, of course, and the curriculum itself. During that time, we have been able to work through with the Vermont Department of Labor, and these individuals would be able to be paid minimum wage for both Tier One and Tier Two. That funding would come through the WIOA, which stands for Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. It is federal funding that comes down through, passes through to the state, and those individuals would be able to be paid during that time, so that they can still make some living and complete the curriculum. One of the other critical partners, of course, would be businesses that are in construction. I have spoken specifically to Inglebird Construction, whom I've worked with quite a bit, and they absolutely are on board with the Second Chance Initiative. And just in general conversation, they have said, if you put a team through this, we will interview everyone, no doubt. So I don't think, Inglebird is out in front on Second Tier Initiative, but I don't think they're that different than a lot of the construction companies. The other piece of this is that it's long-term, big picture. I always think big picture, is that I believe that Tier One can be the hub for the delivery of programs in other industries. So even though we're starting in construction, certainly what we deliver in Tier One, and that is, even if we still deliver small tools and hand, small electronics and hand tools, power tools, that those, of course, are transferable skills into many other industries. They would be suitable for the manufacturing world, they'd be suitable for the automotive world, and a host of others. So, big picture is that I hope that this can be a program in which we set the stage for other industries that will be served in Tier Two. That's it. I don't know if Dominic has any budget stuff to discuss?
So that's a good, it's a great overview. I think, as we have looked at all of our revitalization projects, we've always felt like there's one little piece that we're leaving on the table, and it began with our partnership with the Tech Center over on Diamond Street. So when Nina and Kathy got up ahead of steam, the proposal that came to us was, would the city partner with us and make the resources available for materials that they would otherwise make available for a project? So this could be the whole house on Federal Street, it could be any number of other city-owned properties, it could be the empty lot we have on Nathan Street, it could be work on 99 High, as long as we continue to own that. It could even be, I think, those people who are in violation of the Public Health and Safety Ordinance due to peeling paint or a porch that's falling off, but aren't able to make the improvements that we would like to see them make, and the condition of their property has a big impact on the neighborhood. There's some opportunity there with Chamber Housing Trust program that makes folks of certain income levels able to get no interest, and in fact, no payment loans, by tapping the equity in their home to fix them up on the outside. And so that's another potential source of funding that we could use to do some of this work.
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Kathy? Kathy, a couple of quick ones. You have a, what's the timeline on this?
Well, we're hoping, obviously, we need to hit the construction season time, but I would imagine that end of it will be in fall. I would like to launch by the 1st of May. As you can imagine, you know, make no bones about it, this will be a heavy lift, and getting everybody in the same place will be difficult, but I'm hoping for the 1st of May to start the Tier One. I have my first educational meeting this Thursday with Community High School of Vermont, as well as Vermont Adult Learning, and VSAC, and the Tech Center, so that we can have a discussion on which one of those is delivering which part of them, and how much that might cost, if there's a cost involved. So that's the first thing we have to decide, is what we're delivering in Tier One.
And your capacity is?
Capacity for who?
For Level One. How many?
I can't imagine we could do more than 20. But again, some of that, some of that would depend upon who's delivering and how it's being delivered. Of course, one of the largest expenses will be having the site manager, the construction manager, that as well will need to be hired in order to do that. We certainly need somebody with construction background.
I might be available.
Yeah, okay.
For the class.
For the class.
Any other questions for Kathy?
One quick one. So you said that it's not listed in here, but the Tech Center, are they a partner with you?
Oh, you know, as Tim can attest, I don't create anything we don't need to create. So absolutely, the Tech Center was one of the first that I reached out to. There might be an interest there, especially since they're teaching NCCER up there. Of course, we still would need to have an instructor that is certified in NCCER, of which the only three in the county are Seth up at Pultalo, my son Ross here, and Mark Capsey. So that is of consideration. However, again, that would come with a cost, although the Tech Center is very much on board in the use of the space, anything, the only thing that really would be a cost if we started using their vehicles. But with this already being delivered within Community High School of Vermont, that is why they're coming to be, as well, to see if maybe they can deliver some of the tiers at least. So that's the discussion.
Kathy, it seems totally feasible connecting with them, just because as we, as you move forward into possibly other things that maybe are year-round, you know, they teach welding, they have welding classes, and auto mechanics too. It just seems like there's never enough auto mechanics, so...
No, absolutely. In fact, to that point, they have jumped on board, connected with them, on working on the vehicles of our clients for free, if they do need repair for their vehicles. So they're very much embedded in this.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Kathy. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. So we're gonna recess the city council meeting to move into liquor control. Moved by Ted, there's a second. We're now into the liquor control portion of our meeting. Curry, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for coming in.
All right. So liquor license renewals will be April 30th, this last day, so May 1st, everyone needs to be renewed by then. The letters went out a little while ago, and I just want to thank everybody, all the establishments, for having them in so quickly. That was really great. We have seven first-class licenses, four of which also include an outside consumption permit, and 12 second-class licenses on the agenda. The liquor license renewal spreadsheet was submitted. Everybody has in there, insurance, alcohol tax. There is one item on the spreadsheet that I just wanted to note, there's just a slight administrative error with one of the tax forms for WorkingStar, but other than that, they've been, like, on the clock when they submit their payments. They pay every three months. So just have to figure out that piece there, but everyone else has it been doing.
Did I, am I missing St. Albans Co-op on this list? It's rated Walgreens, but I don't see St. Albans Co-op on it.
I have it as P, approval for? Oh, on the spreadsheet, you mean?
Yeah.
Hmm, I think I do have to add them then.
Okay, they're not on the spreadsheet.
Okay. I'll get that to everybody.
The only repeat offender I was able to determine was 2017, 2018, Food City. We're in a two-year time span, they had three violations for tobacco. No repeat offenders for Class A or Class B violations. Everyone else got that, did? So the only thing I'm not seeing is St. Albans Co-op. But I don't think, we don't have any licenses in our department anyway. So there's none on this list.
No, and they apply, that's a second-class license too, so I wouldn't look at any of the hall tax or the floor plans.
Yeah.
Can we?
Go ahead.
I was just saying, can we reach out to Food City, just to make sure their application is correct? Because they just became employee-owned, and just to make sure their corporators are listed correctly.
Oh yeah, sure.
I think Vermont Liquor Patrol is gonna do that, unless it matters worse.
Okay, I'll make sure I follow up to get our records on them.
Or else they're gonna end up with the other.
That's what I'd like to end up with.
Yeah, that's right. I made a motion to approve first second-class licenses to those listed in Section 2.
Second?
Second by Kate. Any questions, comments, Curry? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Motion to approve minutes, February 11, 2019, liquor control. Sergeant.
Any comments, amendments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
And so just as a reminder, the blanket was approved, the blanket approval request, so you won't have to be in a flurry of signing forms tonight, so I can just get that, the minutes, that the date, the minutes were approved, and they're good to go.
Perfect. Curry? Would you like to walk this one?
Oh, sure.
Could you do some of that dog hearings while you're at it?
Dog hearing? I can work on it. Oh, that being said, yes. Go ahead.
Where are you going?
Oh, I was gonna just mention something about dog licenses, but...
Oh, I was gonna have you introduce Sarah.
And that as well, great.
For those who may not know...
Mrs. Seymour, move out of the way.
Yeah. Motion to move out of the control section.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Back to you, Curry.
Okay, thank you so much. I wanted to introduce the new assistant city clerk, Sarah Galvery. She's been with us for a couple months now, and the office is just feeling the positive presence, so I'm really excited to have her on board. I just wanted to introduce her and have her introduce herself.
Oh, thank you. Thank you all for having me here today. I really am enjoying my position, and I thank Curry for her great leadership in showing me around the office and helping me gain a lot of skills that we're really improving and getting to work the office back into a wonderful place that I think everybody appreciates.
And you came over from where, Sarah?
I worked seven years at UVM after I graduated there, but I'm from Fairfield, Vermont, obviously, and spent all my time here, actually. It's really interesting to work here after growing up and spending a lot of my formative years in the city, going to BFA, St. Albans, and graduating there.
And you live in Fairfield now?
I live in Milton now, yeah.
So, and the office is really feeling the effects of streamlining a lot of the procedures that we have, kind of going through, you know, old spreadsheets, you know, combining them. Regarding dog licenses, I kind of wanted to follow up on that. Sarah just went and just went with it and sent out all the letters, figured out a good way to do that, and then also created today a forum that can go online, that you can fill in, a fillable PDF forum for dog licenses. A lot of people can't make it in, and while we wanted to have an online platform for now, next year hopefully we might, but for people who can't necessarily make it in, it's a good option to, you know, fill out the information. You can email us, you know, your ratey certificate, and we can work with you over the phone for payment. Or you could mail it in, we could do a mail exchange, so thank you for putting that together as quickly.
So Curry, you're talking about mailing out letters, that's of everyone who has had a license in the past, right?
Yes, yes, there's one on that list.
So how do you get the word out relative to new pet owners?
So I have contacted the legislature to see if we had in the past put any ads out in the paper. It didn't look like they had anything, so that's something that I was gonna see if I could get out for this paper and get a proof going. I don't know historically that we've had ads anywhere else other than, I mean, I'll put something on Front Porch Forum for sure, but I don't know where else they might have been. I know we sent out the cards, but I figured that's a good start, and then throughout the year, try to come up with other ideas and reach out to folks.
You should reach out to the vets and just have vets recognize the people that are area in, or the vet that you should be registering your pet.
Yeah.
I registered our two today. I was a 38th, 39th one in the city, so I know there's more than 40 dogs in the city. So it's just people forget, or just, you know, it's not on the top of their list, so...
Yeah, that's a great idea. We should reach out.
And he makes his idea as well.
We also talked about signage today. To give a sign, yeah, out front, instead of the voting early sign, we'll put up a dog licenses are due sign, you go first. See what I mean? Great ideas, all around.
Anthony, don't you want to share with us? Thank you both for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Donna, do you want to come forward to talk about the Make Music Day?
Yes.
I think everyone knows you, Donna, but do you want to introduce yourself?
Donna Howard, Chair of St. Albans Community Arts, which is part of the downtown board. The community arts group would like to put on an event this summer, Make Music Day. Started in 1982, La Fête de la Musique in France. It's an event where people perform all throughout the community, rather than just having one big concert in one location. You encourage musicians and people to set up on porches and corners and parks and anywhere there's space, and just make music all over the city. This year, it's always held on Summer Solstice, which this year is June 21st. And our term of plan at the moment is to center it on Taylor Park in the middle of downtown. The reason I'm coming to the council is because we wouldn't just be having a concert in the park. The idea would be hoped to spread it out to, and it would probably hit every ward, which is why we're coming to you. You know, we would want to encourage people to set up on Fairfield Street, and on Maiden Lane, and maybe Lincoln Avenue, and just spread out. The idea is that not everybody would have to come formally register. We'd encourage musicians to let us know where they're performing. We'd put together a map and everything, but you know, if some kid wants to go out and play the saxophone for half an hour someplace, that's the idea, that people are just making music.
So 21st is a Friday?
Friday is 21st, correct. It is after, after school closes, but Kathy Cameron-Viscante is in the process of reaching out, she's at City School, and she's reaching out to the other music directors, and we're hoping to get some of the schools involved too, because it's not long after school closes. Maybe they can plan out some performances as well.
But it will not carry into Saturday?
No, no, it's a one-day event.
Are you thinking all day?
Are you thinking all day or the evening?
Well, we would encourage people to do as long as we want to, but we're focusing on mid-afternoon to into the early evening. We also plan on coordinating with Twigs, because they do their performances anyway on Friday night. If we get them to do something, maybe expand a little bit, we can work with them.
Donna, when you said after school's out, are you saying for the day or for the year?
Well, the schools closed by the 21st.
For the year?
We checked, apparently all the schools are closed.
Both?
Yes. So I have been informed. So I have been informed. But if they're still in session, then they'll be available when school gets out, but...
So I can take out my drums that I bought at a yard sale for five bucks and play that out front?
Yes.
And neighbors aren't going to call cops on me this time?
Yep.
This time?
This time.
I taught that too.
One of the suggestions that the organization makes is trying to get people to set up like a drum circle someplace, and encourage anybody to come, or you'll have a pile of corridors and have somebody come learn to play. And just get ordinary people involved in making music.
So this sort of goes to the parks a little bit?
Yep.
You want to comment on that?
I mean, it sounds like a fantastic idea from a parks perspective. I mean, that's what we want to do, is get more people in parks more often, so if it serves that purpose, I think Parks Commission will be behind it.
Are you looking for anything else from the city, Donna?
Well, what we're looking for is kind of a blanket permission. We wouldn't want every performer to have to go and get a performer's license ahead of time from City Hall. You know, this obviously crosses all the wards. If we were doing it in just say, you know, Ward 4, then we would go and we'd have to talk to the council, we'd have a board meeting, that, since this is going to kind of hit everybody. We thought we'd see if we could get permission from City Council.
Wouldn't it be better if someone knew where one of these events was taking place, so that maybe...
We're hoping to put together a map, but we're also going to encourage people who just want to...
Pop up.
Yeah, go out, pop out in front of their house, or just, you know, pop in front of the library for half an hour and set up, that they could do that without feeling like they had to go through a big formal process.
And they'll sit there with a tin can either.
Yeah. We would set time limits, like I said, we don't have an exact time yet, but we're thinking maybe 2-ish to 8-ish, somewhere around there, maybe 9, depending on the...
So there will be a cutoff in time?
Yep, yep. We would let people know that they couldn't be performing at midnight on somebody's neighborhood.
Do we have anything like that? I mean, there's nothing that would stop a street performer from playing their guitar or something on the street, is there? Or in the park or anything?
Just the visor, that's... People do it already.
Yeah. No, go ahead.
I think that's great.
Just drums and stuff.
So we don't need a motion per se? Just general approval?
All good.
Sounds good to me, Donna.
Great, thank you very much.
Donna, thanks for coming in. Thank you for organizing this and your time on the Arts Council as well.
No, we're all excited to be seeing us again, because we're putting together plans for the murals and walkway now that it's getting spruced out.
So Donna, while you're here for the Arts Council, I'm going to throw my pitch. Tom's probably sick of it. Art walls?
Mm-hmm. Well, that's murals in the walkway. That's what we were going to start with, was the walkway, because that's the most prominent spot. Didn't want to do anything with it until it was better lighting and things like that, because otherwise you can't see it a lot of the time.
They're talking about walkway?
We need to talk to the design first for kind of their approval, with tentatively thinking about Stanhope's history for that section, because it's kind of the gateway to downtown.
So that's something that someone would paint and then that would stay?
Yeah, the idea is there are these concrete panels that can be delivered to the artist. They're relatively inexpensive. They paint them, and then they get installed. And then if they're damaged, or you just decide, we're tired of Stanhope's history and we want music panels for Make Music Day, then you would take off those panels. They're removable, and the artist could spruce them up if there were vandalism, or you could just replace them with something different for a while.
Okay, so I guess what I'm thinking more is that I want to call it a few, but like Swanton Haswhere, it's a plywood four-way sheet, and then every three weeks they go by and they paint it white again, and someone comes in and paints something else on top of it. And they have rules about there can't be words, and you know, there's all kinds, it can't be offensive, I mean, there's a whole list of things, but that's what I would really like to see in Home Park, and I told Tom and Parks Commission that I would pay for it, I'd put it in, I just would like someone to say, hey, this is a good idea, these are the rules.
Yep.
And it should go, you know...
It's an intriguing idea. I know when we sat there, we originally talked about it, because we're still, we're still a growing organization. We went through some, a lot of issues, as you know, the first year, and we're only just getting our feedback from under us, and there's only four people on the board, and we're only just building an organization, so you don't have a lot of personnel for volunteers at this point. But, and which is why we hadn't originally gotten behind something like that, because you need the volunteers to go by and check it on a regular basis to make it work. But it's something we thought was an interesting idea and would be a good thing to do at some point.
Donna, I think I speak for the whole council when I say if you could do that to accommodate Chad, we would be very happy. We would be very happy.
I'll definitely bring it up, we have a...
And I have a contact, do you guys have a contact on Parks Council? I do, and I'm sure she's more than willing to share all of the things that they have.
Yep, we have a couple. We post our information back and forth and share stuff. Thank you, I can bring this to the meeting tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you, Donna, appreciate it.
If you're interested, I will leave this for anybody who wants to see it. Information on Make Music Day, there's a website and everything.
Thank you.
Next item, item number eight. Consider a proposal to add additional commission member to the Parks Commission. Tom, you want to come forward?
Tom, hold this, Chair of Parks Commission. We had this topic come up by the end of last year. We had a commission member who was missing more and more time, but she was a really, you know, positive contributing member when she was present. She stepped down at the end of her term, so that's not an issue, and we're full now, but we kind of kept that idea up, and I know it got thrown around a little bit when we came to, you know, to renew our terms. That's adding an additional member, and the commission came up with three general ideas, one of which I think isn't so much an idea, it's just like a tweaking possibly on a application process, but we wanted to present it to the council and kind of request, considering these options and hopefully going with one of them. Obviously, the status quo would be fine too, we're working well right now, but one was to, first one was just an additional member, to have an alternate. Somebody, you guys know how alternate works, and so just to have that option available, so we find ourselves in a position again where somebody is not able to make it as often, whatever it might be. Occasionally, we do have meetings where we're down to only four or five people, and obviously it's ideal to be at capacity more often. The second option that came up, and this is the one that the commission, after talking about it a couple of times, is most in favor of, is to add a student member to the commission, recognizing that it probably wouldn't be a voting member in all likelihood unless they happen to be 18, and I don't know the logistics of that, but I thought it'd be cool to try out, not cool, but a nice way to incorporate probably a high school student. With a lot of the details not ironed out yet, depending on if we move forward with this, but something that would start out at least is just an opportunity to play a role in, you know, local board and get a taste for local government to some degree. And possibly down the road, it could be something that coordinates with school and opportunities there, give them some sort of a, you know, dual credit kind of nature thing. So it's not just the experience, but we'll get to work that out as we go. The other choice was, the other option was looking at adding sort of an expert role on the commission, which in having some conversations with Chip, kind of decided it made more sense to just possibly advertise something more specific, looking for somebody with specific expertise on a topic. More often looking at, you know, bringing in someone who's an expert on trees, or an expert on this or that, to get their kind of ideas of what we need to do before we go out and try and spend money somewhere, or hire somebody to do something that we didn't need to do. So those are kind of the three options that the commission came up with, and want to vote over to the council to think about, and...
So this came up, I don't remember how it started, but Chip and I had a conversation. We brought Donna into it quickly, just to see if there's any ordinance changes or anything of that nature that needed to be done. Could not find any, it's just a matter of us, I think, making, agreeing to the suggestion and letting the Parks Commission move forward with it. Is that your recollection, Donna? I don't think there was anything that we found that was specific to a change.
There's a memo when we created the Parks Commission, did you find that?
I did not see that.
Which kind of became the, sort of the equivalent of bylaws, you know, laid out the number of members, and my recollection is there was some discussion about how the chair was determined. It was kind of a political issue at the time. How did you guys come up with the chair thing recently, Tom? Letting your own?
The chair thing basically came out, I was vice chair, every chair stepped down, so everybody at the meeting voted, or like myself, to take that position, so that's how it worked this last time anyway.
The chair was only for the first year.
Yeah, it was. I was just checking in on that. So, so do you want to go with the student thing?
That was the consensus of the commission, just to go that way out, but...
I like the student.
We actually, we actually had students sit on the city council for a year. I would have loved to have a more active participant, but you know, I was, you know, back and forth after and before, we had some discussions about what was happening, and I thought it was a great perspective to have.
Yeah.
So I think that the student would be a really good idea, and just make sure that they're comfortable with, you know, everything that's going on, and then, you know, they feel that their voice can be heard and understood. When we did it, they didn't have a, they didn't have a vote, but I mean, I wouldn't have a problem if that person had a vote in that aspect as compared to, you know, we're voting in here by the citizens.
Yeah, and it's permissible, they can certainly have a vote. I know that we try to work by consensus anyway, or basically try to work unanimously anyway, so we try not to walk away having disagreement about where we should lay on something, so.
So the council could pass a motion authorizing the addition of a member who's a student, voting or not voting, to serve for a term as agreed upon by the Recreation Commission. Or you could bring him back to appoint, you know, the...
I would think that they would appoint that person. I don't think we would disagree. My assumption is you're probably going to get a junior or senior anyway, so they're not going to be on there for...
I would bet maybe the occasional freshman sophomore would be interested in something like this, who knows, but yeah.
I think to keep them engaged, they would want to be a voting member. Is there something that restricts us? If they're under 16, or for...
Some advisory boards, I think you can do it, but if you're going to give them a vote, I would appoint them by the council and make it clear that the removal provisions attach. Just hate to see a crazy situation develop, you know, a couple of years down the road, and you've got a different chair and all the rest, and we're, you know, trying to do something to Taylor Park, and all of a sudden, things are out of control.
So basically what they do now, they interview, Parks Commission interviews them, and then makes a recommendation to the council?
I think you got to have the lines of authority go to the council regardless of who they are or their wives. That's a slippery slope, you know, I mean, so next thing you know, the planning commission must be self-directed, and you know, dogs and cats living together.
Just going to say, I think the only downside that I've heard in workshops that I've been to is a quick rotation. So to get a senior, they're off to college next year.
Yeah.
You've got that, you have to refill the position on a regular basis, but if the commission is prepared for that...
Yeah, we've heard different municipalities, different capacities that have something like this, and varying degrees of success. Some have worked fantastic, some have worked fantastic at times, and others didn't work well at all, so...
Perhaps the student counselor or somebody could nominate somebody to present a name to you for consideration.
I mean, last, not this past town meeting day, Mayor, but when you were elected, you talked about wanting to bring this to younger generations as a perfect opportunity.
So I would suggest that you do some recruitment, and then come back, let Chip know, and we can do the same process, Chip, with myself and one or two council members interviewing, and make a recommendation.
Okay.
Does that work, Chip?
Yeah, definitely will make it happen.
So I'll move that we accept the recommendation of the Parks Commission, allow them to add another member to their board, that being a student member upon approval of the city council.
Second.
And then the questions or comments?
Yeah, I think we should have, you know, one-page policy, you know, what it is they're doing, why they're doing it, how these people are going in, and what they're actually going to be doing, so that it's going to be fair for everybody. So we should have something, it doesn't have to be a book, one-page, just so we have a little summary of what's happening, so we can hold that summary for every selection, every one.
And you're looking for the commission, for Parks Commission to draft that?
Yeah.
You good with that, Tom?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Tommy, thanks for coming in. Chip, you want to come on up? Item number nine, public hearing on EEC Environmental Review for Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Thank you. May I introduce Lynette Clodon of Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation? She'll give the background, but there's a public hearing that's required as part of the federal review of the wastewater treatment plant renovation.
Hi, my name's Lynette Clodon, I'm the Chief Fusion Control Design Engineer for the Clean Water State Evolving Fund, the sole engineering division of the Department of Environmental Conservation. So part of my job is making sure that your project stays compliant with all of the federal funding regulations. We are giving the Clean Water State Evolving Fund loan for the treatment plant project, as well as the state fusion control grant funding for the project. So there's a twofold reason for system of comments tonight. First, there was a procedural error, where we should have probably asked for comments initially, due to the increased level of treatment for the phosphorus removal. Our document that we have that requires this process is pretty old, and it considers the percentage of treatment improvement at a plant to be a trigger for this type of hearing, which is somewhat unfortunate, because in this case, in my opinion, there's only benefits to the project and no adverse environmental impacts. But there is an impact, even though it's positive, we have to have the hearing. So that's the first one. The second one is that there was a change order requested to fill some wetlands at the wastewater treatment plant. This wetlands is located right next to the driveway to the headworks building, and I don't know if you've been there or not, but it's definitely a very tight area to get the solids of the headworks that are removing out and get trucked out to where it can be properly disposed of. So by filling this little section of wetlands, the wastewater treatment plant operators will be more reliably and safely able to get that material out without potentially dumping it in the land. So there's also a net benefit there, in my opinion. So if you could open the hearing, we will take public comments on the actions.
We will open the hearing on the refurbishment project as requested?
Does anyone have any comments?
The wetlands that were filled were what level?
I'm not sure. They did get a permit from the department in order to fill them.
What class?
Yeah.
What class were those wetlands?
Yeah.
That's the question.
Yeah, I would have to look that up.
Okay. But we can...
We can get back. There was a, the department reviewed the action from the Wetlands Division. They issued a permit, the permit's passed through the appeal process.
And no mitigation was required? Did you know it?
That I know of.
Chip, is there any area in the area that's not asphalted, that's not wetlands? Or is it pretty much just surrounded by wetlands?
The wetlands also need the plants, so anywhere that's blonde would also not be technically wetlands.
Still, once you get a wetland specialist to visit a place, sometimes you're surprised with what they come back with, they look at. with what they come back with, they look at, it's low there, almost everything's wet, and as Lynette said, the site is constrained, and always has been, and we've dealt with it as best we can. See, it has been an issue, despite design, I mean, especially an older sewer system like ours, you need all the gravity you can get, so we found a low spot to put the plant. And just to specify, this, a lot, some of this, part of this hearing is because there was a finding of no significant impact.
Right.
It passed in meetings.
That's our proposal, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's, the impact is not significant.
And if it was?
Then we would have to have an environmental impact statement, which our program has only done, I believe, twice in the history of the program, and the projects that never went forward.
Any other comments? Does that work for you?
Yes, if you close the hearing, please.
We will now close the hearing, ignore the comments.
We also are required to have a 30-day comment period, while I have posting online, so I'll get that to Chip, hopefully by the end of the week, and so if folks do have public comments, they, we have 30 days to resolve them.
And that's on the DEC website?
It is.
Chip, you got anything to share?
Nope.
Anything else?
Not on this.
Okay. And we will move on.
On the state map, it appears to be a Class II wetland.
Impressive, Mike.
I got some pretty awesome software for my job, thank you.
Chip, your stamp, thank you for coming in, appreciate it. Your second reading and public hearing for amendments to the Land Development Regulation, which we all have in our packets?
Yep. And just to clarify, the nice colorful map is only for reference, there's nothing on here that represents any sort of change, it was just in case you wanted to know about the B1 district versus Service Industrial versus all the other districts we have. The changes are in the packet, and if you flip through to, what's the second page of the actual second page of the packet, where you start seeing the track changes? The Planning Commission proposed these changes to accomplish a couple things. One is that our regulations didn't give a lot of direction on special types of residential housing that we expect to find today, such as assisted living, or nursing homes, or residential care homes, and that sort of thing. It's been dealt with in a couple different ways currently, for instance, in our table of allowed uses, the regs do say where you're allowed to have a nursing home based on the district, but when you go to our actual definitions, our regulations do not define what a nursing home is. Not everyone knows what a nursing home is, but it's sort of a, there's a weakness there, especially when we went in looking for, if someone wanted to do assisted living, how would we fit that in? And we had other issues, the fact that congregate housing, which one could assume could be any sort of more communal housing situation, the definition kind of made it also seem like assisted living, and it would be an issue if someone wanted to propose a regular old cooperative housing development, and yet our definition makes it look like they also have to provide assisted living. The best fit is just to call everything out, and specifically say where certain uses are allowed. So, if you look at Section 1 of the amendments, which talks about the changes to Section 202 defined terms, what we did is we added a definition for assisted living facility, we made some tweaks to our current definition of community house to make sure that some of the new stuff we're putting in there won't get confused with that. Congregate housing, we changed that definition, so it's only dealing with what you might call a cooperative or communal housing situation, where there are some shared features that you would otherwise find on its own in a fully functional apartment. And we took out all the pieces about providing certain services, those go to the other new definitions we're adding. We clarified the definition of residential care home, which is sometimes called a group home, only when it's of a certain size, otherwise, when it's above that size, it's just called a residential care home. We reflect that, and we added a definition of nursing homes. And for assisted living, residential care, nursing home, we use the state's licensing definitions. And the next section where we make changes to the one that looks like a table, this is where we're adding in these new uses and integrating them into the table that talks about which uses you can have in certain districts in the city. For assisted living facilities, we allow them in the business near road transition district, B1 under certain circumstances, and the B2 in the medical institution district. Congregate housing, we didn't change, except that we did say it has to follow the same rules as other residential units in the B1 district. Residential care homes that are under a certain size and protected by state statute, still follow those rules, in other words, they have to get treated the same as we treat a single-family home. Because of that rule, we actually removed, for some reason, this type of small residential care home was permitted in the Service Industrial District, but single-family homes aren't. By and large, residential uses are not allowed anew in Service Industrial, so the Planning Commission took that out. And then the larger residential care homes and nursing homes followed the same rules that nursing homes already have, is that they're conditional uses allowed in both the B2 and the Medical Institution District. And then the next set of changes is basically some of the rules that we recently added for dealing with multifamily housing and dwelling units in the B1 district, we just added in references to assisted living facilities and congregate housing, so they follow the same rules and considerations. Now, there's one sort of addition to this, in that there's also a boundary change for the B1 district that's packaged in with this amendment. If you know the vacant lot at the bottom of Hoyt Street, which used to be, I think it was sort of a junkyard, you know, for Clarence Brown and some houses, S.B. Collins, Jolly, they own it now, they've cleared it out, it's for sale, it's for development, but there's an issue that we recognize, in that the lots kind of split by the Service Industrial District and the Business One District. We feel it's best to just have it all be in the B1, so the last piece of this amendment is to make the changes necessary, to just put those, it's actually a few lots put together, make them all B1, square it off, which will simplify things for that lot. And that's it.
Any questions for Chip? Think you'll be back next month?
No, this is the second reading. If you so choose after this hearing, you could consider it for adoption tonight.
Move the adopted proposal to the one place.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Jim. Any other questions, comments? Hearing done, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Chip, thank you. You need signatures? Are you covering the local emergency management plan as well?
Yes, I am.
All right. How about it?
Department of Emergency Management requires that we update our emergency management plan once a year, so we brought it before you, it's a new format. NRPC has helped us transition our old one to the new one, but most of the information has not changed. Chief Public Safety has looked at it, and I have as well, and we've been advised that it's complete and ready for council approval.
Couple things, Page 11, Allen Rockaway's listed as a Tier 2, but I'm wondering if that's because he was the last one of two to work for the public works garage, very bottom page, 11, I think.
Well, we could, we should update that to Marty, I thought I found all the Allen references in here, I guess I missed one.
And then Page 13, we referenced Courtney Bushy, and we also referenced Georgie Andrews, and Georgie has retired, so that's Stacy Ruel now.
Okay.
I told you to catch those, Chip.
Huh?
I told me you'd catch those.
That's why we do this, this is the process at work, that's why we do it. If you want, you could adopt with those edits, and we'd be all set.
I would say, do you also get rid of the WRSA radio station? I know it's...
And that was my other thing, do you want to add the drones to Free Press? Just because a lot of folks do get the drones to Free Press in the area, it's just an option.
We can do that, for sure.
So I'll move to approve of those changes.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Jim, any other comments, changes?
You didn't notice where they have the vice council chair?
No, I don't care about that.
Now, this is first example.
We'll do our organizational meeting next month, and we'll take care of that.
We can make that official.
No other changes or corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done?
So if you have one other question about, if we're on our emergency planning, do we need all, we still need all of the qualifications to receive federal grants? Because I do know that some of the grants require certain members, certain number of select board members or whatever, city council members, to be ICS trained in 100 and 200, maybe even MIMS, so I just want to make sure that we're still meeting that.
I'll have to look into that, we haven't come up against that issue yet.
It's usually a FEMA or something like that, kind of grant.
We'll look into that, for sure.
Thanks. For some reason, I thought it was two for a while, I'm not sure.
Any volunteers?
I've got them all, so you got one done.
I have them all, too.
Well, you can call on you, Chad.
I have two, he's got one.
I have all of them.
You got 100, 200, 700, 800, you're good, that's all we want. Okay, should be good.
We'll verify.
Okay.
Quick question, Chip, when was the last time there was a community, a community drill of some sort, for emergency response?
Exercise?
Yeah.
They're often, but not community-wide. But not community-wide, but the chief does them with the schools, and big businesses, my man.
I don't think there's been a community-wide one in 10 years.
And you don't mean a tabletop, with the emergency management personnel from the region?
Well, I don't know what I mean, I just know I haven't seen any or heard of any, and I'm wondering, is it, if it hasn't been for 10 years, does it make sense to initiate something?
To give a first alert.
I'll only visit with the chief on that, get his take, it's a good question.
Okay, we'll move on to first reading of the trash orders.
This is me.
That's you, I saw Tom making the move, I was wondering what to deal with.
Getting out before the heat starts.
Before the trash gets damp.
Hey, Dom, it's all yours.
Okay, we have taken Councilman Pecky's civil liberties concerns to heart, we have met...
And his wife.
And his wife, mostly her concerns, a little bit of Jim's, and we've met with the haulers.
The trash talk.
At Lang, and made some revisions that we hope will gain some traction. The central premise of it is, the city is not involved in who your hauler is. The city is not involved in what day of the week your hauler comes to pick it up. The city only requests that we get notified and register of who's hauling in the city, and that you will place one of our stickers on your trash cans, so that you can mark what day is your pickup day. It can be every day, but, you know, so every hauler can be in the city every day, if that's what their business requires, but they're only going to be picking up that person's trash on one day, and want them to mark it, and then they have the same amount of time before it needs to leave the curb, and the fines and everything remain the same. But the central design feature is that there's no prohibition on who hauls, we just require notification, so that we can limit the amount of time that the bins stay out on the curb. We've also added in a provision for dumpsters and roll-off containers on a construction site, in terms of the sound of backup alarms on Page 3. We've continued that they can only pick up between 7:00 and 7:00, but the backup alarms can't sound before 7:00 as well, it used to be 8:00. I believe that's it. We can talk about some specifics that catch your eyes, but that's the general thrust of it.
I think Jim's going on vacation here soon.
Yeah, they could tell you.
Maybe, second, you know, the 25th. And I didn't see, Dom, it doesn't tell, doesn't say that the trash bins have to be backed, you know, in a fence or anything like that, or just off on the curb.
It does have a screening requirement, we can...
27, 28, okay.
It's on...
Page 2.
Page 2, line 27, I think it's been in there the whole time, but we can get rid of it if you'd like, or...
I was thinking if you put encouraged as opposed to mandate.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's just up by someone's log, I don't care if it's screened in or not, I just don't want it on the street.
You know what, on the front lawn, which is a lot of people leaving their business.
I just had a couple of questions, Dom, on the, on the roll-off, 15-day limit, to exceed that, you can get a renewal, does a renewal cost $10 each time, or is it just a one-time $10?
I think it's just a one-time $10.
And then...
So I just want to clarify, now you're saying, I'm hearing a lot of, today, the word bin, bin is the open containers, I think, that like the Sol waste district gives you, that aren't closed, that aren't hinged, they're unwheels, like your definition of tote. I don't see a definition of bin in here, and from what I'm seeing in this ordinance, that's what you don't want, you want something closed, that's not going to have waste blowing all over it, or unsanitary or whatever it's the night, and usually that's for recyclables, those bins, those open bins, so I don't think they, I don't think we want to use the word bin, we're going to say we can't, that no one should use those, we should so-state it, or else, put a definition as to what that is, and when that could be used, I just don't see that being addressed in this ordinance.
Doesn't it say, sorry to jump in, doesn't it say that residential customers shall use totes?
Right, but a tote should be in a mobile waste container with a fixed hinge, lid, wheels, and horizontal handle, that's not, that's not the square bins that the Sol Waste District gives you to put your recyclables, that a lot of people put outside next to their garbage tote for them to pick up.
Which causes all of a sudden people going out.
Yeah, exactly.
So, Jim, is your point that, I thought that your point was in our conversation, we shouldn't use the term bin, because the language of the ordinance is tote, which has a specific meaning that it has lid?
Well, that's what this says, right? And I'm saying, if we're, if we're requiring all recyclables in a tote, then we should specifically indicate that we don't want these bins in sight.
So make the ordinance more explicit, no bins.
Yes, yes. I mean, I don't care if we have it or not, but I think we need, I mean, that's a gaping hole in the ordinance that someone is gonna, you know, gonna have somebody's recyclables blowing all over the neighborhood, and they're gonna say, but you didn't outlaw that. I didn't say I couldn't use it.
Just throw out for people's feedback, page four and line twenty-five and twenty-six talks about no roll-offs on any city street or public property. What does that mean for the downtown if someone were to purchase a building and and got it from...
What if we say without permission?
That looks... Anyone else comments, questions?
I have a comment, so I can go ahead. Keep going, though, Tim. Let's go find it. I had a couple of quick things, while I open that up, Tim. Has there, have there been any discussions about some of the haulers dropping off, roll-offs that weren't the size as advertised? There's a bill that's being discussed right now in the legislature about that. I'm just wondering if we've had any conversations with people, if anybody's complained about that.
It hasn't come up.
Interesting. Um, the other thing was, the, the hours that a hauler can pick up are seven AM to seven PM under the ordinance? We, we got a complaint this morning from one of Alden Hawkins constituents over on Congress Street that there's a hauler that's picking up before six AM. Appreciate Marty giving them a call. You guys are all very responsive to the email. I said, I really appreciate that. But, yeah, I thought before six AM is pretty early. Yeah, they went up our street at five-thirty.
Been in front of my house by forty-five. Usually quiet, you know, we're on Flat Street, so.
And I think that's, I mean, as long as they can get away with it, they'll try to do that, just to get as much as they can in with this ordinance, it'll be pretty clear.
The other thing for me, Dom, is just, um, I did say in language regarding dumpsters a distance away from the road. I'm not sure what that ideal distance is, but you know, we talked about suggesting the screening, but we could have a dumpster two feet off the sidewalk.
And, and there are some of those.
Yeah, there are some.
Except for clutch, right?
Except for clutch.
Except for clutch.
I'm not sure how we, because I know that lots are of different depth, but...
I'm not sure.
Just give that some thought, then.
Yeah. It's hard for me to think, you know, typically you have a dumpster on a, at least a duplex or above.
Right. Yeah, that, that's what I'd be referring to.
Yeah, and many of those are going through site plan. But not all of them. A lot of them are just grandfathered, been there forever.
There are some properties where I don't think a truck could get into, yeah, that, that, get in very deep to pick up the dumpster where, where they have to be somewhere accessible.
Chip? I'd like to make sure that, um, on page two, uh, starting with page eighteen.
Line eighteen.
Line eighteen, we're hit with this.
Which means that to pick them up faster.
That dumpster?
It's a dumpster.
Yes.
Okay, just trying to make sure it prohibits this.
Which means the hauler needs to pick it up more often, obviously.
Well, I think if you have it there often, that dumpster's not locked. So someone will buy late at night.
Where was that?
Ask if that's around the parking garage.
Can you see it? You just wanted more camera, huh?
Did it go black, or were you able to see it? You were able to see it, okay. I'm just, because if it does mean to prevent this, then I'm all set. If it doesn't mean to prevent this, and that's just a dumpster, I see the totes like this all the time, all over the city. Um, now, I'll tell you what I do at my house, is I pay extra to get a second tote. All right, but some people, they'll pay extra to get their second tote, but they try to put twenty-five bags in one tote. And it ends up going on a windy day, or someone hits it, or, you know, it ends up going all over the street. Like I picked up a small reusable plastic bag this morning. Not a one-time, one out of one, one, one purpose bag, but it was a lot. And I put the garbage in that was blown off on Braider Street in that bag, and put it in my tote. But that's what happens when people overflow those garbage. And I want to make sure that everyone agrees with me that it's line eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two prohibits that. I interpret it to be, but I want to make sure it does. I'm prepared for everybody else, so everyone's clear that that's prohibited.
It sounds like to me appropriately sized. If it's, if it's a continual twenty bags or whatever and just finished up in a tote, whether it's a second tote or dumpster.
And, and this wasn't taken today. This was taken several months ago. I think probably last summer, I guess.
I mean, what I do is, if my tote's full, I'll wait till dark and then I'll go to the neighbors.
Those are Hawkins.
Yeah.
Are you?
He's got two totes, right? He's got two totes, right?
I think Mike and Shelley all do that to me. Oh, he's kidding. You got some valuable information tonight.
Tom, you have to make notes of that.
Oh, I'm not.
I have a question about the, um, the penalties, the fees. So these are per day. So first offense, twenty bucks. You go away on vacation, you forget. Ten days later, that adds up per day. Is that how we want to do this?
Is it safe per day?
Then I saw somewhere that it said these were...
Each day a violation continues, shall constitute a separate violation.
Yeah.
That's the line thirty-two on page four.
We hope that we're gonna give a law...
We're gonna start up.
Uh, we can amend it.
I would think if someone forgot for vacation, it could be waived, right?
Well, it's gonna be tricky. I mean, how are you gonna...
What counts as an offense? Is it, is each day an offense?
That's what this says.
Because you're, you're told to be marked accordingly, so you'll know what the pickup was.
Is each day a violation can you, continues, shall constitute a separate violation? So if you went on a ten-day vacation and you were fine for all of those, now you're a five-time offender. And the next time, you, you're hit with a five-time fee? How's this gonna work practically?
So the each day is a separate offense is pretty standard language in all ordinances or regulatory schemes. We also use a lot of common sense in enacting it, you know, so. Staff are certainly open to a proposal to adjust the penalties. But I would encourage you to leave the each day is a separate offense thing in there. It's, it's less common that it's the person that goes on vacation than it, it's much more common.
That's right.
That it's an absentee, unmanaged situation. Staff, I think, have been pretty effective at navigating those situations and using common sense.
Now, I've, uh, seen a lot of situations, and we're gonna find out here, since people where tenants move out, they're being evicted or whatever, and they just leave the garbage near the, near the, near the dump, near the tote or the dumpster. They have so much, it just overflows. What do we do in a situation like that? Do we find the, I mean, is this a fine that we have to tack down to the landlord, or is there, or do we give them a little bit of wiggle room there to try to get rid of that stuff?
We would use our common sense and try to analyze the situation. Every situation is different. So.
I'd like to comment just to say, I think the landlord should be held responsible for that, because he's either the one evicting or having the people get out, or he got notice of the people leaving. And two is, I'd like to make sure that this also entails free. When it's a couch that's got two torn arms on it, been sitting out there through four rainstorms and a snowfall, and the plow's already got, have to put a snow on it, and someone's calling the city saying, who's gonna go pick that up? So, uh, there's a lot of...
So this isn't our only tool. We've also got the Public Health and Safety Ordinance to deal with a lot of that stuff already.
The Public Health and Safety Ordinance deals with the free stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah. Someone's done a good job with that, because I don't see stuff out there for a long time anymore. I don't know if that's us picking it up.
It's Marty and his team.
Yeah, they do a good job. I just might see it for a day or two, and then it's gone.
It's reporting now, right, Marty? A lot of people are calling up and saying...
Uh, Matt Moehren does a pretty good job. He's out daily as well. And as soon as he sees something, he tags it, and the clock starts ticking.
Yeah. I'm not against free stuff, no doubt about it. And I think I've said it before, I'm against free stuff out there for a long time, you know?
I mean, I didn't, if you want to put it out there during the day, see if somebody wants it, and at least cover it, put it somewhere at night. Don't leave it out there, and let it only get rained on, and nobody wants it.
Right, exactly.
I told you in the story, while I showed the free stuff out in front of my house on a table, and they took the table. That's a, that's a true story.
Why was it supposed to take the table?
Could you read that back? Take that in your kitchen?
Did the same thing for us. We had veggies on the table. They pushed all the veggies off.
Took the table.
Took the table, yeah.
Well, when you, when you bring the garbage, you're already gonna bring the table back.
I took a bassinet out of my neighbor's garage once. It was not the garage, but on the driveway, thinking it was free, and I got it out. It was in that free baby craziness, you know? And then it's like, that wasn't free. I had to go walking. It was terrible.
The dog was baby, it was still...
Someone took my reeves. I started going to get water, and I came back, and it was gone.
Really?
So we're good right now, everyone, for these changes, and we'll...
We can make, where are you at on penalties? It'd be nice to know if this is the next one, from first to second reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone good with that?
Yes.
All right.
So where are you at on penalties? Same. Leaving center, fine.
Yeah, I just think, I think, um, it makes sense to me, I guess, that a second day of violation that you're charging them, I think they have to be, at least be aware that there was a first day of violation.
Yeah.
And then if they're still there, then, then I can see it. The person on vacation, I don't think that, that applies, but because they're, because they're not even noticing the violation.
Okay, we're done with that?
Yeah.
Moving on. Our discussion of developments on the horizon. Would the activity at the State House relative to marijuana legislation? Just try to start that conversation and I don't know if you know, you're on there, Mike, but...
I was, I was giving a heads up, and with some trepidation, I will do my best to give you status update. So, um, S fifty-four passed the Senate, and so this is a bill that would move us from a place where we are now, which is that it's legal to possess small amounts of marijuana and use it in the comfort of your own home if you're an adult. But there's nowhere where you could purchase it without going through the medical process and having a prescription. So we're, we're kind of in this weird gray area right now with the legislation that was passed last biennium. So S fifty-four passed the week before we adjourned for a town meeting on a twenty-three to five vote. Our Franklin County delegation was split in the Senate. And so it's over in, I believe it went to House Judiciary, uh, right now. So things could really change. But the, the highlights are that it creates a cannabis control board, which has a lot of rulemaking to do, so there's some real broad parameters set, but a lot of the details aren't in the legislation. But the schedule is a two-year process, which they create a licensing and then an application period for cultivators, and then for manufacturers and wholesalers, and then for retailers. And so the retail licenses wouldn't actually come into effect until April of twenty-twenty-one. So it's two years from now that you'd actually have retail licenses. As it's been proposed in S fifty-four as it passed. Now, the House will do what it does, and there'll be a lot of disagreement, I think, between the House and the Senate versions. The House version of the bill that Sam Young was the lead on has some different parameters, but really, we're gonna start working on the Senate. And so this is basically the format. And so the key points that I think Dom was most interested in hearing about were, on top of the ten percent excise tax that's in the current legislation, and actually Senate Finance wanted that to be sixteen percent. So that's gonna be one of the big political things, is how big is the excise tax gonna be that the state takes on the retail sales of cannabis? And then the one that we're interested in is the carrot that they give you to actually allow retail to happen in your municipality is a, a two percent local option tax at, in the Senate version. And then the House version of the bill, we had a larger local option tax, which is a three percent on all the sales. So to give you a sense of the scale, statewide, they're talking about JFO analyzing everything that happened in the other states that had a tax and regulatory market and trying to boil that down of what its impact would be on Vermont. Is that in the first year, there was somewhere between three point eight and seven point four million dollars worth of excise taxes at a sixteen percent level. And by year three, it'd be somewhere between eight point six and sixteen point six million. So you're probably talking about, for the, the few municipalities that have a licensed retailer, you know, a two or three percent local option tax is gonna get you a couple hundred thousand dollars, depending on how many licenses they go with. So it's probably not like the huge money that people were talking about a few years ago. But it is a substantial net after all of the cost for the control board and the different places that the money has to go. So, um, the, both bills contain a provision that allows municipalities to say, we don't want to have cultivators, we don't want to have manufacturers, we don't want to have retailers, or they can pick and choose which ones they're gonna exclude or prohibit through municipal ordinance. So you can, we, as a, the city council could decide, other than the retailer or retailers that we have now that are selling cannabinoid materials, we could say right now that we don't, we won't allow any sale. We could also say, we want to put some provisions in place and allow it, and take advantage of the local option tax. Again, this came over from the Senate. At the earliest, we're looking at two years from now, having licenses for retailers, the way the the bill is currently in play, and the House is gonna have a big discussion.
Is the anticipation, Michael, that your medical marijuana elements would merge into a retail, or would they still be two separate entities?
So the, the House bill envisioned dispensaries being able to basically sell retail for recreational use before and get provisional licenses before the sort of retail market was created. But the Senate doesn't work like that, from what I understand from the side-by-side. So it really, the dispensaries could do both, and there are opportunities for people to get, to basically have multiple licenses. But you, but I think that those entities, those businesses, would have to have a license for each section of the vertical market that they wanted. And sort of parallel stuff of medical would be over here, and recreational, or sort of unreg, you know, that less, lower regulated would have separate licensure that would be, and all of it would be under this new cannabis control board. But all of their rulemaking would happen in the year and a half before they even started the application process for licensing. And I think some of the details about that would have to be worked out in the making, and it's just too granular for the legislation to actually take on.
That board, kind of like a remount carrot word, but the cannabis, is that what it's kind of gonna be structured like?
It's a pretty, yeah, I mean, it's a quasi-judicial... It's a pretty, yeah, I mean, it's a quasi-judicial, people having lots of salaries. I mean, I think that the budget provision in the Senate was over $800,000 for a year for the staffing and the paying of the people who were appointed to that board. So it's, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be a professional quasi-judicial board if this bill becomes law.
So Dom, I thought a while back, when they were talking about medical dispensaries coming, we basically zoned any cannabis sales up to where the hospital is. Was that just initial discussions, and then we didn't continue it, or?
The, our current rule is, isn't just about marijuana, it's also about any clinic that dispenses a, shoot, what's it called? The DEA's Schedule 1 and 2 drugs, any clinic that dispenses those as its primary business. They're allowed in our typical commercial districts, but they're not allowed in our historic district. That's the current rule. We would have to change our zoning to to deal with marijuana, although regular retail marijuana would probably actually be a loophole around our rule, except that it's still one of the scheduled drugs in the DEA. There's always gonna be that disagreement between the feds and the state. I think we would, you know, the planning commission will have, certainly have a conversation about zoning, but I think we'll also follow the city council's lead in terms of what you think is acceptable for us to consider where retail sales should be, because I think one of the things we need to consider is that over time, it's going to be more commonplace, that you'll see it in places where you see many other retail items in a downtown, you know, in a big box store, wherever it might be. Who knows how it's gonna be set up as we go that way, but as Michael said, either way, I think we're gonna have some lead time to deal with any changes that we wanna make to our regulations.
Is there, did you see anything that gave you a sense that we couldn't do what JFO said? No, I mean, it's, the way that it was passed by such a big majority was that people felt like their local municipalities would have a lot of freedom to say, no, we don't want this here.
Or where?
Or where. So there's nothing in there that, that you know, all the zoning that we have for all the other businesses, all those ordinances still apply, so there's nothing in there that changes. You know, where, there's nothing in there that basically says, if you wanna have it, you have to have it anywhere. You know, you don't have to stick in a residential neighborhood or anything like that. And I can double-check as it moves through the House, and just make sure that all those municipal provisions stay really strong. But I think there's no way that this passes the House without a lot of authority and deference given to municipalities about wanting this. And I think in order for it to pass the House, it's probably also gonna need a stronger ability to have a local option tax, especially if the excise tax stays at 10%. So there's a lot of us that think the, and Senate Finance certainly thought that the excise tax should be a lot bigger. Senate Finance wanted it to be 16% and not 10. And then have a 2% local option on top of that, which would mean, when you went to the medical, or the marijuana store, if you buy your marijuana, or your cannabis, I should say, you would be paying an 18% total tax with the Senate Finance plan. Now, that wasn't what passed the Senate, it passed at 10% plus 2. And the bill from the House was 11 plus 3. So there's a lot of disagreement about what the right tax will be, and I think that's gonna be the biggest point of disagreement. But the carrot there, if the local is big, should lead us to have a conversation about, do we wanna have, you know, knowing that people a town over can buy retail marijuana, do we wanna forego the benefit of the local option revenue in order to keep it out? And how big will that local option revenue really be? And I don't know the answer to those questions at all. I can give you a sense of the scale, but that's really the question that'll be before us as, you know, this becomes real. But right now, I mean, we have, you know, there's cannabis in our neighborhoods, there are people who are driving drugs, and we have absolutely no benefit of it. The stats that they're showing from Colorado especially are that this takes about 80% of the cannabis out of the black market and into the regulated market.
But does that depend on what the actual price is gonna be based on what the taxes are?
Right.
I mean, at some point, you could price yourself out of the market where the black market is still fairly strong, right?
Right.
If you don't find a happy medium.
Yeah, and so if there's a modest state excise tax, and then we allow municipalities to have a slightly bigger one, I think you're gonna see a bunch of municipalities, and we might be one of them that says, you know, we don't wanna have these establishments in our municipality or parts of our municipality. And the folks who are like, we want the revenue, are gonna choose that. And so I think municipalities are gonna have a lot of options with whatever passes is what seems to be the flavor, because both the House and Senate versions of this bill have strong municipal sections.
So, Mike, you know, this is probably coming in at least the next two years. Is this gonna come this year? Are you confident that the House is gonna pass something, and then get together with the Senate and pass something that's compromised?
You know, this one's really hard to see, to read the tea leaves, so the Senate passes 23 to 5. So, but the Senate has always, on this issue, had a much stronger majority. The House tends to split upon all kinds of weird, different factions, so I can't really predict that the House will get a version passed. They'll pass something, I would imagine, but that the Senate can tolerate. And then the other question is, will the governor veto it? And the governor's been a little bit, the governor has basically said, I would support it if you do, you know, have the funds to go towards certain things, which I think everybody agrees they should go to in terms of law enforcement and public health. But he also has had very, made some strong statements about there being a roadside drug test that's effective. And I think there's some question about whether there's, in within law enforcement, an affordable, effective roadside test for marijuana that can tell you that it's psychoactive. I think that those things are in development. And if the governor vetoed, so I think something will pass the House, the Senate and the House will probably compromise. I think the big question is, if the governor vetoed whatever we come up with from the legislative side, I don't know that we would have the votes to override it. So I think it's probably gonna come down to whether or not the governor will support whatever comes out. But the reality is, states around us are having tax and regulated markets, and if you're down on the other end of the state, you've got your neighbors from Brownborough and Bennington, you go to a cross-border in Massachusetts and legally purchase cannabis in a regulated environment, and then bring it back into Vermont. So it's like, right now, we have all the problems of there being cannabis around without getting any of the revenue or the financial benefits that'll allow us to regulate it and protect kids and protect consumers.
Any other questions for Mike? That sort of rolls into the next item.
I think Marty had it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike, you may have mentioned this, but did they suggest what the retail value is in Vermont?
Yes, let me pull up that fiscal note from Senate approach. Yeah, I'll get back to you on that, Marty. I know, so what was in the fiscal note was, they didn't give, they didn't specify the retail amount, like per, what they were assuming the per-pound price was gonna be in the short version of the fiscal note that I've got. So I'll look into what they based, what JFO based all their stuff on, get back to you.
So this rolls into Dom.
I put this agenda together, and I was waiting for somebody to say, are you high? Nonetheless, I think it's time to have a conversation about the local option tax. As I watched some of the town meeting coverage this past town meeting day, I watched the actions that South Burlington took to consider some dedicated sources for their local option tax, which they were looking to expand. I looked at Winuski enacting a local options tax. And then I went and looked at the list online from the tax department, which is in your packet. And many of our comparable other full-service communities have looked to this as a revenue source. And it's a very logical one, when you start looking at regional centers of commerce that provide the full-time police department, that provide all the economic development activity, they have all the tax exempt property. It's a natural fit from a classic taxing standpoint. And then in our case, we're completely surrounded by St. Albans Town, who has already enacted it. So, you know, the typical argument is, well, we would lose all of our local businesses, and it would be, you know, a big impact on retail. I don't mean to diminish those concerns.
I'm always kind of the believer, 1% isn't gonna scare anyone off.
Yes, I mean, we're looking at, we just went through our budget process, you have a sense of what some of the pushes and pressures are, and what it takes to achieve no increase or an increase that's on par with inflation. We can't just keep doing a 2% ratchet forever. And it's awfully hard to keep at 0% forever with some of the policy objectives that we have. So I think this might be an idea whose time has come. I think it might make some sense asking Jeff Carr or somebody to run some numbers for us, give us a sense of what's out there. I haven't looked into it in any great length myself, to see what the strictures are from the state legislature. I believe it would be a charter amendment, but beyond that, I haven't gotten there. So, I bring it forth to the council to give me some feedback. Should we look into this?
I don't mind looking into it at this point, though I'm not super in favor of it. Just the other day, we were purchasing a car, and it's an extra 350 bucks on top of what we purchased for our vehicle, just because we did that extra 1%.
I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was applicable to cars.
That's a purchase and use.
Okay. So, you know, just, it is on business owners though, right?
It would be just on sales tax. That would be a purchase and use tax that you would.
Purchase and use.
I mean, explore it, but I, like John, I think I'd like to know what it applies to, and what it doesn't apply to, and what the effect it would be on our citizens, because that means something to me, so.
South Burlington got turned down, but the rental percent on rental cars was approved.
Yeah, two, one on rental cars, and one was a dedicated sales tax increase for a new recreation facility.
So that failed, and the rental car passed.
Yeah, and the rental car, I believe, was targeted towards their transportation infrastructure, their streets. Implicit in my comments is trying to reduce reliance on the property tax. That's the direction I'm coming from.
This came up when we did the talk show on Channel 15 this, last week. The town brings in 800,000 a year on average, is what they're, obviously a larger retail base than what we have, but.
But depending on how it's structured and what it gets applied to, you know, I bet, 800 grand's enough for the sneeze.
Anything else you wanna add on that?
No.
Okay, Tom, the union contract?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we have in front of you the full contract proposed between the city and NEPBA, which is police and dispatchers. Took over a year to get here. NEPBA is new, and so we had to spend awful lot of time coming up with new language, taking a lot of public work folks out of it. In the end, we have a very different agreement than what we had before. At one point, I thought about giving you all an agreement with underscore and red line and all that, but it's illegible. It's so different from the prior ones. Pretty substantial changes in terms of compensation and benefits, but the net impact is something that's favorable to the city and well within the confines of our budgets. Pretty substantial concessions from the unions in terms of scheduling, which was a big issue for police. Had a compensator on holidays. It gives the city significant control over the schedule. Previously, we're in a situation where if there was an open shift, the city had to order someone in, and when you order someone in, there's a double time component. That's eliminated. So that's a really, really big savings to the city. It gets rid of some internal friction in the departments. That's a major feature of the contract that is a big, a big plus for everyone, I think. I think overall, it's a fair deal for everyone.
And what are your next steps on this?
The next step is to hopefully have the council approve the city manager and a mayor sign it, absent any minor administrative minutia that comes up. Occasionally, there's a little typo or something like that, that's totally material. The union has already voted on it, and they've approved it.
What is the union rep?
Jason Rodden is the local rep, who's a sergeant.
Motion to approve the union contract, second.
Any questions of Tom, any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the union contract, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Actually, it passes. Thank you, Tom. Thanks for all your effort.
Motion approved, minutes 2:11, 19, second.
I have a motion and a second, 2:00 minutes. Everyone, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Motion approved, warrants 2:20, 19.
Second.
Second by Marie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion approved, warrants 3:1, 19.
Second by James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion approved, warrants 3:8, 19.
Second by James again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to mayor's report. Full council may not be aware, but we got a good response from the police department regarding truck traffic on Upper Weldon Street. They drilled down into the GPS information and found that there was information on the GPS that was telling truck drivers there was a low limit on the interstate access road. So they were being redirected to Upper Weldon. So, they are in the process of correcting that, but it's not gonna be a quick fix. It may take three to six months to correct that, so. I actually saw, I don't think I know if you know, but I saw Mrs. Lennaw, made her aware of that as well, so she was very happy, as was Bob Avery, so. If that does, in fact, come to fruition, that will be a big step in resolving that issue, so. What am I gonna read in behind the badge?
Sure will be something.
Greenup Day is, I think, May 4th. Brad Jenkins, who had organized it, in years gone by, I think for eight years with the Boy Scouts, has stepped down from doing that, so. The city and town will be looking for a coordinator to handle the Greenup Day. Marty, you perked up, is that?
Sorry, no, I just made sure your eyes weren't on me.
Thought you wanted to add that to your resume? And then the last thing that I've had many discussions on is, for those who don't know, Scott Magnon planted a field of sunflowers down on the other side of the railroad crossing bridge on Route 7. Had about 1,400 people attend, taking pictures, all through the last. Had about 1,400 people attend, taking pictures all through last fall, last summer. So we, he reached out to me and we're going to try to do a sunflower festival in the, in the city and utilize a field potentially in the industrial park to attract people into the community. Very early planning, but just one other event that we'd like to try to focus on to get people into the downtown area. I presented it to the downtown promotions as well as downtown merchants, and everyone is fully on board and supportive of it, so. Something we'll strive to make happen, the dates is, it all depends on how, what his planning season is, but we'd be looking at the first two weekends in August. So, or one, one of the first two weekends in August. I think that's about all I had. Tim, you want to start?
Yep, I got three really short ones. Marty, do you need us to give you a list of potholes in our wards that I need repaired?
If you have some, certainly central one, we've been out the last two Fridays.
Yeah, I know they're going to be, it's difficult now, given the weather, but, I mean, just so that you understand where we're coming from too on ours. The second is, Tim is, have you made contact with Kathy Manning regarding Kingman Street Classic?
We've been playing email tag. We've, we've had a couple meetings scheduled that I think she canceled one of them, so I, I have that on my list to reach back out to her. So just to that point, Marty's been involved in that discussion, this is their 10th anniversary, and we've had discussions about taking it off Kingman and putting it up on Main Street because of the 10th year.
I've heard that, and I'm really excited about that, and I hope somebody keeps up. Sometimes I think that she feels the city doesn't want it, but we really want it.
And we've spoken to Farmer's Market at the same time, and they were ecstatic about the fact that it was in the park with them at the same time, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
That is, we are having conversations.
Excellent. It's a great, it's a great summer event, and I hope we continue to put all our efforts into that. And the other thing is, did we lose power control last summer?
Did we? No, there was there.
I don't, I don't remember seeing them much. And I just wondered if they went away.
No, there was, there was two.
There was two? I only saw one of them.
I saw, I saw them quite often, actually.
I don't think they did the normal 7 to 4. I think they did, like, I see them later at night.
I think they spent more time down at Houghton Park than they have in past years. It's weird to see them.
Yeah, so. I've ridden Taylor Park as much as I have been.
Okay, okay. I just must admit, must admit, I just didn't see them as much today. I just thought we'd get away with it. Okay? Good. I hope we have.
Mike?
I had mentioned my kudos to Marty for jumping on the one trash complaint that we've received, and I'll echo what Tim said about, there are a couple of spots that I think are in some of the less traveled parts of my ward where things have gotten pretty bad, so I'll be in touch about that with the roads. Yeah, if folks have questions about anything that's going on with the legislative stuff, you know, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
So just to jump on that, Marty, obviously there appears to be a thaw coming this weekend. Are we redealing manholes, catch basins for flow? Is that part of the?
We'll go out, yeah, we'll go out and make sure they're opened up beforehand, make sure there's no leaks or ice or anything else.
Okay.
I think when winter is going to end eventually, which means we're going to take those Christmas decorations out of the park, right?
They're, well, the lights are out. We can't take the other ones out until the ground starts.
Santa's sleigh are frozen to the ground.
Can you burn tar, tar paper?
After we're good and standing up here.
Put some Easter eggs in the, in the sleigh.
We're going to put bunny ears on the reindeer.
Yeah.
Could cut them out. Do a little shortening.
Kudos again to Marty and his crew. I know they had a tough winter with the, a lot of the, the cookies, they had pipes bursting, all the snow and everything, because it's been fantastic. And a lot of credit goes to their hard work. On a personal note, I know we didn't have a lot of voters on town meeting day, I think somewhere around maybe 11%, but the 69 people have voted for me and for back to the city council. I want to thank them publicly for having the faith in me to stay here and you got to put up with me for the three years.
Curry, how many write-ins were against him?
Two, two.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, Tim and Jim, do they have to be sworn back in?
Next minute.
Right?
The only thing I have to say again, because of the weather, I know it's been hard, but the corner of Pearl and North Elm, where they dug up for the water leak, if you could throw a little more crushed stone in there, because with all the truck traffic going to the old mill, I think it just beats it up, so it's a pretty busy intersection.
Hopefully with, with this warm spell coming, we're going to be able to get in some cold ice.
Yeah, I know you've been up against the, yeah, the elements, but.
It's definitely on the radar.
Yep, thank you.
You're the last one.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm ready to use my frognip to pass chat, because he stole my chocolate kisses. Without my permission, so I'm going to.
He told him to take the wrapper and throw it over here.
Yeah, you're putting it in front of me.
I just, I have two quick things. I had a constituent complaint about the number of police visits to the Lord Walden housing, so I don't know if we could look into that and see if that is, if they'd be there visiting one or two houses, units more than normal. And the only other thing I want to talk upon, talk upon real quickly is, we did receive, at least I received an email after the last council meeting about pit bulls in the city. I just want to reiterate, I am not for any type of ban pit bulls in the city. I have a pit bull, and the only thing she's going to do is like you to death. And my neighbors have a pit bull, and he's the nicest dog ever. So, I think it's, that, that type of dog is picked up because of the reputation by certain individuals, and I, I still don't believe it's a dog issue, it's an owner issue, so I just want to reiterate that.
There's some, some discussion about that, because I'm.
I got an email about it, that's all I know.
Do we know what the outcome of that is? Were we talking about an email after the meeting?
An email, not, not email from the pit bull owner, the one I received from someone, I think they were in Swan, I can't remember.
Oh, yeah. I think we all got it. I think we all, we all received it.
About banning.
Banning.
About banning pit bulls in the city.
Do we know what the status of that is on Fairfield Street?
I haven't heard anything. 60 days, I think, in the middle of the game.
Yeah, I guess it was, yeah. Any other comments, anyone from the audience? Tom? Was it as exciting as you had hoped it would be? Even more, I'd like to hear that.
Right on schedule, Mr. Mayor.